Tonight's Town and McCandless meeting, September 22nd, 2025. Jason Singer couldn't be here today, so I'm filling in. Let's pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We generally start the meeting by reading a number of announcements. At the previous town council meeting of September 8th, town council entered into an executive session. The meeting concluded at 8:45 PM. Prior to this, tonight's council meeting, council entered into an executive session for personnel matters. Next, the town would like to extend a big thank you to everyone who attended, helped, sponsored, volunteered, and everyone in between for our 2025 Community Days. Abby and Brittany and Matt and Will and everybody else on our floor, as well as the Department of Public Works, James and his crew did a phenomenal job. I think it was the best ever. Thank you. Please join EAC for All About Whitetail Deer on Tuesday, September 30th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall, and that will be presented by PA Game Commission biologist, Jeannie Flegel. She's done this a number of years ago and had an amazing attendance, so please come. Join us to share your thoughts related to future opportunities for the towns, parks, connections, and programs. The final Parks Master Plan open house is on Thursday, October 9th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM here in the Powers Room. It's almost that time of year again. Fall leaf pickup will begin on October 13th, 2025, and ends on November 26th. I thought we did a phenomenal job last year. I hope you keep that same pattern. The Town of McCandless and EAC would like to invite you to a free course from the Tree Pittsburgh, covering tree biology, health, proper planting, pruning techniques, and many more for Saturday, October 18th, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, located here at Town Hall. Registration is required, and you can find those details on our website. Now, I'd like to ask for public comments on any.
Yes, sir.
I'm kind of disappointed it's not on here. The gala, or the Shining Star Gala for the benefit of the Heritage and Cultural Center, will be held November 1st, Saturday, November 1st, at the Camelot in Warrenville. There are 12 people that are being honored for their contributions to the town. Tickets are available on the website for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any other public service announcements from council? Thank you. Are there any public service announcements? Public agenda? Announcements or items?
Irene Caliendo, Ward 2. First of all, I would like to echo, Community Day was excellent. Thank you. I know it was a lot of hard work, so well done. I would just like to request that when you get to the conversation about the budget information, budget summary, there seems to be a big discrepancy between, in the tax revenue, between budgeted and an actual, and I would just like to hear a few comments on why you think that is the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call for the approval of the minutes of the town council from September 8th, 2025. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trujetti. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one abstain and the rest unanimous. And I guess Jason isn't here, so. Six to zero. We'll start with the administrative and finance reports. Finance report for the month of August 25th. Brittany?
All right. Good evening.
Bring it close and speak into it. So we have new mics tonight.
Sorry, we're getting used to them.
There you go.
All right.
That's excellent.
Okay. Good evening, council. In close in your pocket, you will find the checklist needing from August 2025 in the amount of $2,625,425.99. If you have any questions on the checklist thing, I would be happy to answer them. Sorry, my turn. You can't hear me.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, was it 20? Is that number 425.99 cents? Or was we at 420 on the?
Oh, I'm sorry, 420.
Okay.
Yes.
Whatever we read is 420.
Yes.
Would somebody like to make that motion? Thank you.
Motion to approve checklist thing number 08 dated August 1st, 2025 to August 30th, 2025, totaling $2,625,420.99 as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, abstain, okay. And. What's your case?
And then you will see on your dashboard report, the year-to-date revenue numbers for August 2025, were 10.6 million, which is slightly up from the prior year's 10.3 million. Our expenses are currently coming in at 53% of the total 2025 budget versus 54% of the total budget in 2024. So we're on trend with where we have been in the past this time of year. So far, in the finance department, I've wrapped up budget forecasting meetings with each department head, and we're working on gathering, on getting the 2026 budgets finalized. So far, it's been a smooth, pretty enjoyable process. Everybody has been great to work with, and I'm excited about a great budget season. So if you guys have any questions, let me know.
I too noted, Ms. Caliendo noted about the discrepancy in the taxes, tax revenue. Is that just a delay in getting the taxes that are coming in through the August month?
I'm happy to answer that. If you want me to.
Go ahead.
If you'll notice on the general fund, under taxes, 301 to 310, what you want to look at, you know, comparing year over year is percentage of budget year-to-date. So we're at 59.49 this year. Last year, at this time, we were at 63.55. The deposits, you know, due date August 31st, they don't get deposited till September. So you're going to see that number take a big jump at the end of the month in September. With that being said, you'll notice that the budgeted number itself is up a little from last year. You know, we had 13.9 million for taxes, and this year we have 15.3. There were a couple assumptions that had been made, some of which are going to, we'll have to see how they pan out for the rest of the year. Realty transfer tax, the budget amount had been increased by about $440,000 based on some pending transfers that we knew were going to take place. We need to see that come to fruition to meet that budget number this year. In addition to that, the earned income tax number was increased from 6.9 million to 7.5 million. That projection, we look to be on par for that for the year. That's 67% collected as of the end of August. So we should catch up to this. Will we meet or exceed that in revenues? I don't want to promise you yes, but I think that once we see September's numbers come in, that'll, it'll make a lot more sense.
Plus, I don't think we got the state funding.
What state funding?
That we get from the state. This is the budget.
Yeah, well, so then we're just talking about the tax situation right now. There will be some of the state numbers, you know, as you follow through year-to-date, that may be delayed. We did receive in September the full amount from our pension deposit for the MMO, and we also received the full amount that we were expecting for the Volunteer Fireman's Relief Association. So you'll see another, it's less than a million. It's about $900,000 come in. Remember, those go in and write back out. So, you know, it's not necessarily anything that you'll see, you know, on a net income side, but it's going to be another end. Overall, nothing that I see in the revenue side has me concerned, thinking that we'll be behind by the end of the year.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the communication report, John.
Mr. Bajarski's communications report is in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have those. I complimented him. I do like his new style of the report that he gave. I think it's a little bit more detailed than it was before.
Great, thank you. I guess we don't have a junior council report yet because we didn't appoint a junior council.
So we did appoint them at the last meeting. Both of them are here tonight, and they'll be happy, I believe, to give a report. They've been working with Diane. Are you guys tag teaming this? You coming up together?
Yes.
Come on up to the podium and let's have.
Hi, my name's Arjun Puri. I'm in 11th grade at North Allegheny Senior High School.
My name's Christian Sparrendale. I am a senior at North Allegheny Senior High School.
Yeah, and it's nice to see those of you who we didn't see last month, and we're very excited for this year. Yeah.
So this week marks the close of North Allegheny's first week at school. Everybody's kind of settling into things, and it's looking like it's going to be a great year. The National Honor Society, its members continue to offer service to the school and community. We've logged so far 1,500 volunteer hours as of early September, and we'd like to extend our thanks to the many National Honor Society members who gave their time on September 13th for Community Day. I saw a lot of North Allegheny students there throughout the day, helping with the bounce houses and the other activities.
Yeah, and we don't want to take too much time on North Allegheny, but North Allegheny Student Council is busy with preparations for homecoming weekend, which is coming up on October 3rd weekend. The homecoming parade is themed Night at the Movies, which means all the floats will have different movies assigned to them as they pick, followed by the football game on Friday, the 3rd. And then the night of the 4th will feature the homecoming dance, which is themed Santorini Sunsets. Once again, the junior town councilman encouraged town council members to attend the parade and football game, and it's always an exciting opportunity to witness firsthand. It's going to be a lot of fun. This year, I'm front-loading the planning. So yeah, I encourage you guys to be there. Now we'll move into some perspectives from each of us on the town issues. So Community Day was wonderful. Everyone loved it. I heard things about it in school. Week after, we had a lot of volunteers through NHS, like Christian mentioned, and notably, a lot of younger North Allegheny students attended, and they loved it. The bouncy houses were a big hit. The food trucks were a big hit as well. They were wonderful, and we love to support the small businesses that attended. Something else that pops up as a particular interest for students is learning more about the environmental advisory committee and how students can get more involved. In general, students always want more opportunities to help the community through the community, and the most efficient way to do so is by advertising and opening up positions that are available for youth in various committees so that their voices are valued at all levels.
I agree with Junior Councilman Perry that Community Day was a great success. I think it was an even greater success for a lot of the younger community members. I saw a lot of parents who, when, you know, when I was running a bounce house, would come up and ask me and say, where do I buy tickets or like, what do I need to pay to do this? And I told them over and over again, you know, it's free, like, just get in line, and I think a lot of people really enjoyed that. It was really cool. I had never attended Community Day before. This was my first time going, and it was amazing to see the local vendors, the people selling food, the, um, the state representative's tent was set up, and it was just cool to see all the local representation and talent we have in McCandless. I didn't notice, I was looking through last, the last meeting's report, and it talked about the Northland Public Library's renovations, and I'd just like to comment on how important that is to a lot of North Allegheny students. Northland Library is right next to that kind of shared campus between McKnight Elementary, Carson Middle, and North Allegheny Intermediate, and students from all grade levels at those schools will frequent the library after school to hang out with friends, wait for their afternoon, evening activities to start or to even study. And I've actually talked to a lot of students about the renovations, and they're very excited to see where it's going, and many students are talking about how they're even more likely to visit the library with its, like, new, modern look. And I think we could even explore the idea of some sort of event welcoming all, like, the influx of new students we're going to see visiting the library, because I think it'd be a great opportunity to see how the youth is, it actually, exactly is using the library.
Yeah, and kind of piggybacking off what he said, I think that the library is such an important landmark in the fact that it allows, you know, students to go further their education, read some more books, which I know is, in modern day, is kind of fading away a little bit. So I think that really brings that back in a really positive way. And once again, thank you to everyone who's involved with Community Day. Now, every year, we have those initiatives, kind of like a project, if you will, that the junior town councilman takes on. And so we want to talk a little bit about ours for this year. Something that's been floating through my head was to reintroduce and spread youth voter signups throughout the community. I know 2026 is coming up, and Northland Public Library is a notable representation of this. Should be noted and further advertised, using North Allegheny's buildings to nonpartisanshipally advertise and encourage seniors in high school to vote in local and larger 2026 elections. Discuss and present about voter etiquette, methods to prevent further political polarization, as well as discuss how to properly approach political conversations and more, which I, I think is super important as these people are getting into the real world after high school to further, for, you know, future generations of voters. And hopefully, see genuine numerical increases in youth voting during the next election cycle. And finally, we can do this through a couple of different ways, like spreading it through student council and at youth forums in partnership with something that Junior Councilman Sperrano is going to talk a little bit about in a little, in his initiative called the Next Gen Plan, so.
Kind of building on that, when I was thinking of things I could do to help McCandless and widen, like, the youth perspective and voice, I thought about some of the work I've done through student council at North Allegheny, particularly on the principal's advisory committee. And just to give a quick recap of what that is, every month, we host monthly luncheons where we gather as many students as possible and also the principals of the school. And we kind of create this forum where students can express their concerns, express some of their ideas, and some of their thoughts on how we can make, like, life at North Allegheny better. And it's a really cool thing to see as we see genuine conversations between school leaders and students. And in the past, you know, we've also brought in district leaders, the superintendent, board members. And that got me thinking, I feel like there's room to do something similar here on the town council. I don't, I think it would be really amazing if we could see even just semi-annual, every couple of months, a meeting where we bring it. Possible, and then any town council members or leaders who are willing to attend, just to kind of have genuine conversations where they can exchange ideas, and so that town council members can get a feeling for what the next generation of voters looks like and what their perspectives are and what the issues that they feel need addressed are. And so also that the younger voters and people who are just growing up in this community can feel like their voices are heard and that they have a say in what their everyday local life is. And I'd also like to see a second approach to that, like, some sort of newsletter or information system where we can keep students at North Allegheny and just the McCandless in general updated on the happenings of their local government. I think it'd be very easy to design, I could even do it myself, design a teen-focused newsletter that we could spread through student council and throughout the senior high school and maybe even down at the middle schools, just to really let students know, hey, here are the things that are going on, on your local government, and, you know, give them that opportunity to express their own voices if they desire to do so.
Yeah, and just one last thing. I know, like, we've, we've talked with a lot of you about this year kind of making it more about, you know, Town and McCandless issues and how they apply to the youth rather than just North Allegheny. And I think that that's exactly why this is such, you know, amazing idea. And I think that it allows the youth of McCandless to get involved on a level.
I would love to sponsor a town hall for as many young people as you all put in here. Understand, the one thing that I'm able to talk about is the happenings of the campus.
Yes, sir.
This is local politics. But I would be happy to sponsor that myself.
I think that, I think that'd be a great opportunity, and I'd love if we could open up lines of communication to see if we can make this happen within the coming months.
I'll get what you have to do.
Thank you. So once again, thank you, guys. That's all we have for this one. So thank you very much.
It was very comprehensive, and I applaud you guys for your efforts. You really gave us a lot of takeaways here. Nick, you can hook us up with the library, maybe, and Joe set us up with some meetings.
That's a great report. A lot of great ideas. Thank you for offering.
Amazing.
Stop going. Thank you.
I would never expected it to be that excellent.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Next, liaison reports. The McCandless Industrial Development Authority, Mr. Arlo.
There was no meeting this last month, Jack.
Thank you. How about the North Hills Council of Governments, Mr. Singer? He's not here, but they had no meeting. Are there any public comments on administrative and finance?
Paul Heckman, I just want to congratulate these gentlemen for putting on a very impressive step forward for what they want to do, especially not focused as much in the last couple of years on just what was going on at the high school, but in getting people more involved in where we're at here. The library is fantastic. Some of us remember, though, when that library wasn't anywhere near as big. It was a bus. It was a thrill to get in the car and go out when the bookmobile was in town. Of course, you had to have ordered your books in advance to know what you wanted to get at that time, but well done, gentlemen.
Thank you, Paul. Next, the planning and zoning reports. Oops, I'm sorry.
Irene Caliendo, Paul stole a little bit of my remarks. I just want to thank you, gentlemen, for your endorsement of the library and for illustrating what the library can do for, with the 21st century youth. The renovations are indeed in, I would say in full swing, but we're on the, very much on the downslope of that. And so look for first, a ribbon cutting for invited guests and then a grand opening for the public, probably the third or fourth week of October, but stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene, and thanks for all you do for the library. Next, any other public comments? Next, the planning and zoning reports. Mr. Ryan's.
Thank you. We have two items on the agenda tonight. We have an application for mortgage subdivision for Blazer Drive, subdivision plan number five, amendment number five for block lot 945B49 and 945B50, as well as application for mortgage subdivision for Blazer Drive subdivision plan number five, amendment number six for block lot 945B47. Both of these items were on the previous planning commission agenda. They were both heard by the planning commission. They recommended approval to town council for tonight's meeting. Both of these items are consistent with the number of Blazer Drive subdivision, mortgage subdivisions that we have gotten since the original approval for the site plan, and these are just the mortgage subdivision chop-ups kind of standard that we've had for the past, past few months. For departments' updates, on my past few director reports, you've seen that we're continuing to work on our zoning code review and cleanup. We're essentially in the phase of, we've, I've taken a few months to kind of look at the town code and see how the zoning code operates with our current functions. I think we've identified some of the issues to clean up, and we're kind of getting to that second phase where we're going to have a draft ordinance in front of town council at some point in the near future with some of those updates that we made. I'm happy to answer any questions that town council has, but it's all about for tonight.
Any questions? Thank you. Excellent report.
Thanks.
Liaison reports. Planning Commission, Mr. Arlo.
Yep, there was a meeting held September 2nd that Mr. Ryan detailed, and will appear later in our agenda.
Great, thank you. Zoning hearing, Ms. Flunin.
You have June and July minutes in your packets. August will be approved this coming Wednesday. But I do want to note, the last two meetings, we've had roomfuls of people, and it's always very encouraging to have members of our community come and be aware of the zoning things and things that are happening in our neighborhood. And I just want the community to know. I really appreciate it, and there's lots of seats filled.
Thank you. Any public comment on planning and zoning? Okay. Recreation reports. Parks and Recreation Director's report for the month of 2025.
Good evening, everybody. I guess you can hear me. Sorry, Jack. Got excited. Thanks again. Thank you especially for your kind words about Community Day. I came to John in a panic because I had no one to staff the inflatables like a week beforehand. And then I put it out to you guys, and it was like overnight, they were completely filled with, I don't know, 15 different students. So without you guys, it wouldn't have been possible. So I really truly appreciate that. And thanks again to everyone else who contributed to making Community Day a success, and it was a lot of fun for us as well. A couple of updates and highlights. The McCandless 175 Committee met for the first time last month, and we have another meeting tomorrow. So it was a great first meeting of introductions and sharing of ideas, and we're off to a strong start. On October 2nd, we're having a hike led by Katie Stanley from Latotomy Nature Center in North Park. I will be hiking the Brant Trail at Walpark. You can sign up online. It is free, and she'll be guiding us through the Brant Trail and pointing out some different nature that you'll find in plants and animals along the trail. And finally, the McCandless Adventure winners were notified last week, and every parent I spoke to was just thrilled that their kid won a ride to school in a fire truck or a police car. So I've been working with them and those agencies to coordinate rides to school sometime in October. So lots of fun things happening as always. If you have any other questions or comments on my report, I'd be happy to address them.
That was such a clever idea. When will you announce the winners?
Um, once I get everything ironed out as far as details, then we'll announce the winners. I did reach out to all of the school principals last week and just gave them a heads up as well. Yeah, they were appreciative of that, but they, they were thrilled to, to know that that was happening too, so it should be a fun day.
Thank you. Appreciate you doing that.
Yeah.
Liaison reports. The Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center, Mr. Hart.
There was a fundraiser for, at the Community Day, at the Car Cruise. We raised $118 selling hot dogs and.
Oh, nice.
And again, we'll, I mentioned again, the gala is our big fundraiser, the Camelot on November 1st. All are welcome.
November 1st. My hot dog was burnt, but I enjoyed it.
If you asked for a hot dog.
I know. Activities Advisory Ad hoc Committee, Ms. Flunin.
There was no meeting, but as you can see from Abby's report, the recreation and activities have been very robust in the past few months, and looking forward to continuing.
Thank you. Any public comment on recreation? Okay, Town Managers Report.
A few highlights in the report. Our ad for the position of Assistant Town Manager will be put out on Friday, so everybody can look forward to seeing that and sharing it with anybody who's interested in that position. Employees have warmly welcomed our new Roth component to the 457B plan. It's a great thing that council has offered another investment tool for employees to prepare for their retirement. Very appreciative. Spending a lot of time doing budget work right now. Brittany's doing a great job working with the department heads, and we're meeting with each one, coming up with our capital improvement plans and the general operating budget as well. Everything's going smoothly. We'll have that ready for you as per charter by October 15th for council.
Charlie, you gonna do two by twos?
We're gonna meet, you know, in order to avoid the conundrum of having a quorum together, we're gonna have two meetings of three and one individual meeting. So we will have them set up in a similar fashion to last time, but it'll be three, three of you and Brittany and I. You can run us through the wringer if you need to. But don't, if you don't have to. DCD grant applied for the sidewalk between Grubbs and Coomer Road. No reason. DCD grant applied for Grubbs and Coomer Road and Process, applied for a grant through the SPC. A lot of good work done by Abby and John Bajarski and Diane putting that all together for the Ingmar sidewalk connection as well. Highlighting North Meadows Drive sidewalk project is well underway. Contractors moving swiftly through that. I think it'll be done ahead of schedule. Don't quote me on that, though. Don't quote me on that. And then one important thing for public safety that you may not realize is we did have money in the budget this year for updating cameras and license plate readers at various intersections in town. Chief's been working with the. Chief's been working with the IT department and with neighboring municipalities, making sure that we're on the same format as they are, so we can share that information. We'll be able to complete that project before the end of the year. Last two under miscellaneous, having great meetings and working really well on our fire department standard operating guidelines. And the steering committee's been moving forward really well. And then pay attention to the upcoming presentation about whitetail deer. We've been hearing a lot this year about deer control strategies and different situations with deer through our police report, through other reports. So, you know, as we come into the fall and start thinking about the hunting season, we want to remind that there's certain hunting applications available through the police department for folks to hunt on areas in town. And, you know, thinking about whatever else we may need to do in order to help eliminate the, you know, the nuisance that people are seeing here. We've heard a lot from the EAC. Heard a lot about public safety. So lots, lots to consider there too. Happy to answer any other questions that you have about anything else going on in town or on the report.
Thank you. Town Attorney's Report, Mr. Carble.
No public report, but my report was in the packet. If anybody has any questions on council, let me know, or we can have an executive session if necessary. It's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Is there any old business? Okay, any new business? Yes. You need to take an action concerning Blazer Drive number five, amendment five, mortgage subdivision?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Blazer Drive subdivision number five, amendment five, mortgage subdivision application submitted by Super Duke surveying as reviewed by town engineer and they're dated July 16, 2025 and recommended for approval by the planning commission. Second.
Thank you, Doug and Don. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now, can we take an action concerning Blazer Drive subdivision number five, amendment six?
I'd like to make another motion to approve the Blazer Drive subdivision number five, amendment six, mortgage subdivision application submitted by Super Duke surveying as reviewed by town engineer and their letter dated September 2nd, 2025 and recommended for approval by the planning commission.
Second. Thank you, Nick. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Make another motion to approve the partial bond release of number six of the Rachel Carson Eco Village Performance Bond in the amount of $276,281.25 per the town engineer's review letter dated September 3rd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Next. Doug, you on a roll?
Sure. Motion to approve the 2026 minimum municipal obligation MMO as prepared by the town actuary for the uniform and non-uniform defined benefit pension plans and the non-uniform defined contribution pension plan.
Second.
Thank you. All, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I will, I will make a note on that too. Town Actuary prepared those three MMOs for the three different pension plans. Based on the value of a unit placed by the state, the entire MMO should be covered by state aid next year, pending no state discrepancies.
Good, thank you. Next action concerning appointment of environmental advisory committee.
Make this one, we had three great interviews, but we felt that there were two that we would like to offer this role to and we're really excited to get them on board, working for this wonderful committee. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jenna Parker and Nadia Yusko to the positions of junior council members for the 2025, 2026 school year. And that should say probably junior council on this for the environmental advisory committee.
Okay, yeah, that's why I was confused. I had written in these two gentlemen, I thought we did that. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. Ms. Clunin. Appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next action.
Action concerning conditional officers and employment from the position of full-time patrol officers. Making motion to present a conditional, conditional offer of employment to the positions of police officers from the County McCandless to Connor DeBransky and Alexander Edwards, subject to the successful completion of a physical and psychological examination.
All in favor? Sorry.
Second.
Ms. Clunin? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next action concerning memorandum of understanding with the McCandless Police Officers Association.
A memorandum of understanding between the County McCandless Police Officers Association concerning justice divisions in Article eight, the current collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
On this time. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do we have any public non-agenda comments? May I have a motion to adjourn?
To lose.
Nick and Joe, all in favor?
Aye.